Mr. Chairman.
All set, sir?
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm now going to call the March fifteenth meeting. The Norfolk County Commissioners. To order. This meeting is a public hearing on the fiscal twenty-four budget proposal. And call roll Commissioner Collins.
President.
Commissioner Stady.
President.
Commissioner Shea. I'm gonna ask, on Thursday, March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, Governor Charles Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions, the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty. That order was effective immediately, and until it is rescinded or the state of emergency is terminated. On July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, by action of legislature, the order was continued until March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. I'm gonna ask everyone to join me, it's a ruling of flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I've called this meeting to order. We pledged allegiance, and I'm gonna read the general law governing the Mass General Law, then we're going to morph into a joint meeting with the Norfolk County Board of Trustees and the staff at the Agricultural School. In accordance with Chapter thirty-five, Section twenty-eight of the general laws, a public hearing has been properly posted and advertised in the Norfolk County Fiscal Year Budget to begin at one P M. The Chair will entertain a motion to open the public hearing on the fiscal twenty-four budget.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll also take a motion to continue the public hearing till later in the meeting. Immediately after our next agenda item, which is a joint meeting of the Norfolk County Agricultural School of Trustees for the proposed discussion and vote on the Norfolk County's high school fiscal twenty-four budget.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. I'll now call upon Chairman Stady to call the Norfolk County Agricultural High School Board of Trustees to order.
All right. The hour is one oh three. I now call the meeting of the Norfolk County Agricultural High School Board of Trustees to order. Uh, we need to take roll call.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
All six of us.
Right, so, uh, let's see, we have Mr. Parrish.
President.
Right, Mr. Shea.
President.
Commissioner Collins.
President.
And myself. There are four people in the Constitution's decorum, so we're, is Matt Chan here by remote? Matt?
I don't see him.
I thought he said he was coming, but.
Okay, we can maybe check to see if he's with us later.
We have enough.
We have a.
Is this meeting being recorded?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. All right, so at this time, we have the, meeting is called to order, attendance is taken. Uh, we're gonna call upon, uh, Mr. Wallace to, uh, like your presentation. Oh, John?
Where's your? Before, before John gets into the uh, nuts and bolts, your permission, Mr. Chair, a quick statement. Um, I wanted to remind the board, and maybe inform Mark, that I was hired to be the superintendent at Norfolk Aggie, not because I know how to milk cows or grow plum tomatoes. I was hired because I'm an educator, I'm a successful educator, and one of the reasons, or a couple of the reasons that I'm successful in what I do, is that I surround myself with good people. I empower them to do their jobs. I hold them to high standards. And we build a community and a culture where people want to be. The adults want to be there, the kids want to be there. The rest of the staff want to be there. And as we move through budget deliberations or any other conversations that we have concerning the school, I hope you all keep that in mind, that, um, it's important that we have the autonomy and independence to do our jobs. And if at the end of the day, you decide that we're not doing a good job, well, I guess that's a different conversation. But to date, the anecdotal, as well as the written evidence that I've had, presented to me, tells me that we are doing a good job. And that you trust us, that you would trust us to continue doing that good job. So, I wanted to make that statement before we talked about the budget.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are we ready to proceed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, John?
All right, uh, everybody got a copy of our presentation electronically, but I'd be, I have copies here if somebody did not print them out. I see that, uh, Mr. Parrish didn't print out. Would you? Like that one? What, you just printed out the principles?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Could the Chair have one, please, if you have one?
If I may sure I have it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you.
But I do take note of things much.
All right, so the first page would be our budget principles, uh, our, you know, John, Robin and I are here, of course, to present it, but this represents the uh, work of a lot of people in the, uh, management of the school. The principal that I think we ought to take a quick look at, that I want to bring your attention to, is the second one, which talks about our desire to generate a surplus while abiding by the DESI minimum required spending rules. I think our trustees are familiar with the idea that DESI has, has inquired about whether we're spending enough money on our school and students required by law. We are working with them currently. Uh, we have a meeting, John and I have a meeting scheduled with them on March twenty-ninth. We were gonna get some feedback from them about a suggestion that we made about the calculation that which would give us a little more flexibility. But we, meaning management of the school, felt we ought to put a budget together that abides by the law currently, not a waiver that we may or may not get a couple of, uh, weeks in the future, right? So there's, there'd be a risk of putting together a budget that wasn't meeting the law, and then finding out that we didn't get the waiver, so we're, we're putting a budget together, and I can show you when we get to the numbers, uh, how it works, because I've added a little section, a little calculation. Now, the other thing that's, you'll see reflected in this budget is the idea that there's a lot of, it's my third bullet here, there's a lot of capital maintenance in this, in the school to be done. I mean, with, with the facility that we have, which we like to brag about, three hundred plus acres, you know, dozen school buildings, is a lot of responsibility to maintain that. You know, come, with, with that structure is going to come cost, if you want to maintain what you have, or of course, even improve what you have, but we're just focusing on maintenance. So John and I, uh, the management of the school are trying to find money to do the maintenance that we can do. Now, we can't afford to do a multimillion dollar project right now, because we're not in a position to borrow, we don't have the funds from any other source, so we're trying to spend in five, ten, fifteen thousand dollar below capital increments on things that we feel like need to be done in the school as far as a maintenance, uh, view. I would say, um, in the last five years, there probably hasn't been a lot of maintenance, these things that were not uh, critical have been put off, because the, the school for years and years was in a break even or even a deficit mode. So there was no, uh, need, uh, nice to do things being done, there were only need to do things being done. Right, so John and I are starting to try to address some of the nice to do things while we can, before they become real problems. Right, so there's a whole list of things, and, uh, we can talk about that if you'd like. Um, the, the, the next page is, has to do with, uh, we introduced this last year, which is, has to do with the breadth of the school, and where our students are coming from these days, which I think would be an interest to, to you guys from a county standpoint, and also from an out-of-county standpoint, is to um, what the scope of the school is and, and who we serve. So I think John was gonna talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, you don't even have to actually read that page to, to, uh, get a sense of what we're dealing with here. The left-hand column is the in-county students, and the right-hand column is the out-of-county students, and the right-hand column is significantly, uh, longer than the left-hand column. So, over the course of the next couple of years, we're gonna have to try to figure out how to get those columns to be a little bit more equal to one another, uh, while at the same time maintaining fiscal stability for the school. Uh, out-of-county towns, we're up to seventy-eight different communities. Uh, if we accept one of the kids who's applied this year, we'll be up to seventy-nine. Because we have a kid who's applied from a town that's not currently on the list. So it's something that we have to be cognizant, cognizant of moving forward, that, uh, in addition to the state DESI mandates with regard to admissions, we also have to, uh, make sure that we're looking at the bottom line. And this is obviously gonna be a critical factor in, at, uh, making decisions that are in the best interest of the school.
I have a question for John.
Sure.
Do we have to balance in-county and out-of-county?
We don't have to.
Is that just a a, a goal or concept, or?
When the new admissions regulations were passed down from the state, they used the word, uh, preference. We asked to give in-county applicants preference during the admissions process. Now, the state did not define what preference means. Every district was left to its own devices to figure out what, what they were gonna do with that. And this is the first year we're operating under those new guidelines, and to be perfectly honest with you, we haven't quite figured it all out yet. Uh, it's still a question that we have to answer.
Thank you. But the other issue too, in light of what John provided at the last meeting we had, was about DESI in terms of the formula, and you get more money from out-of-town, out-of-county, and that worked against us, so to speak, so we maybe, may, may want to look more at balancing it for that reason too. But you know what I'm saying, because of that DESI formula, remember?
Yes.
We talked about.
We broke into two categories for the tuition and the, uh, the.
But there's no rule that says the columns have to be balanced. It's just like, it's an approach which would make sense.
Such a difference in tuition size.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I've not done this research, but I, I don't think there's another school in the state that has this number, uh, of communities that send kids to their school. I'd be shocked if anybody even comes close to us.
But there aren't, how many agricultural schools out there, again, left in the Commonwealth?
Four. There's us, Bristol, Essex and Smith.
So.
I thought Essex wasn't.
They're.
They're almost hybrid.
They're a hybrid, yeah. They're not a pure agricultural school, neither is Smith anymore.
Where's Smith?
I thought it was just us and Bristol.
Okay.
Us and Bristol are the only two county agricultural schools, with the same governance structure.
Yeah. Okay, John, go ahead, please.
Okay, so if there are any other questions, we'll go to the actual numbers that we're gonna propose, and that, these numbers have been shared with John Crone and have been loaded into the, um, budget of the county, right? So in infinite visions, in the county's budgeting system, all of these numbers are currently.
So we're on page three of your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Um, so the thing I want to draw, two, two things I, I'd like to draw attention to. In the lower left, uh, our budgeted surplus. So our budgeted surplus after the comings and goings with the county, right? So some of this stuff is intra-county, it's inside of the county be, because, inter-county, excuse me, because we are supported by the county as a school, obviously, and we're also paying expenses to the county, which are the indirects, which county pays for us, and we reimburse them. So there's pluses and minuses from the county, but after those things, if you look at the school on a standalone basis, we're, we're proposing a surplus of three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in the lower left, that's a little bit lower than last year's surplus, if you remember the last year's surplus current year that we're in, our budget was four fifty. Right, was around four fifty, so that's lower. Um, the number of students is higher, if you look at, at the upper left, where, those, those tuition numbers that you have up there equate to five hundred and eighty-four students, so we are getting our student number up, it's actually a little bit lower than we thought it would be at this time, we had a few more departures during this current year than we thought, so originally I, we had hoped to be at about five hundred and ninety students, now we're at five eighty-four, so, um, to tell you the truth, we're still sifting out why that's happened, whether it's related to COVID nineteen, you know, carry-ons of COVID nineteen, we're still uh, extricating ourselves from that unusual, unnatural circumstance that took place, you know, and it's gonna take a couple more years before everybody, you know, that was related to that, and the middle school level is now gone, and the high school level is now gone. So I, we're still, we're so optimistic that we can get close to six hundred students, which is what we've talked to you about in the past, is, is aspiring to, and financially, obviously, that will help us. Um, now, the other thing I'd like to draw attention to is the far right, which is the net school spending calculation, right? So that's something that we haven't shown you before, and I'm not sure that we'll show you on a regular course, but it is something that we have to now be aware of, and we were brought to our attention by DESI. So there's a calculation that calculates the required net school spending for us, that's a number that we get, that four million, the five million, four forty-six number comes from the state, that's the required net school spending for our school, that's not something that we have control over, that's something that the state determines. Then there's a calculation of what we are spending, and you'll see, um, that there's a positive thirty thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars, that means that we are meeting our net school spending by that slim margin, thirty thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars in this budget. If we get, uh, to, to waive the capital revenue that we receive from out-of-county, that's the line below it, the five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, then we'll have an excess spending of six hundred thousand dollars, which is a nice cushion from what we're gonna spend to what we're required to spend.
You explained that last year.
That's what's, that's what's in place still in this May twenty-ninth, in this March twenty-ninth meeting, but we wanted to, to give you a budget that worked on its, on the face of it. Right, so we're, we're, we don't have a lot of cushion there, it's thirty thousand dollars. That's not much of a cushion on a sixteen million dollar budget.
Could, could I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Very.
Yeah, sure.
Um, so, uh, I know that uh, because, um, all the calculations hadn't been factored in, um, and this was kind of a surprise to us, and it, there was, it was, it was hard for me to, to, to do the meeting over the phone, so, because I couldn't get to see everybody, so sorry about that. But, um, so, one of the things said, oh, we might have to give money back to the, the state, right? Uh, I think that's what it was. Or, or to the town, to the town, is, is this trying not to do that, and, and we're putting money into the school instead?
Exactly, for FY twenty-four.
Because I, I know that was our goal, yeah.
Yeah, there was, to remedy the problem for any year, a, but, a potential was to give a rebate back to the out-of-county cities and towns, or to spend more money, those were two of our possible remedies, in addition to going to the state and, and petitioning them for a, a waiver or a different calculation.
So we just put any money back in the school, cool, that's all I wanted.
That's what we're planning on doing for FY twenty-four, we haven't solved our FY twenty-three problem yet, our FY twenty-three problem needs to be solved by that waiver, or else we'll have to come up with another accommodation with the state. They're, uh, not going to punish us or penalize us in year one for anything, but they may require us to spend even more next year. If they're not happy and they don't give us the waiver, they may come back and say, you have to spend even more money next year. To make up, yeah, to make up our shortfall this year.
Great, thank you. When do you anticipate, John, that you'd know from them?
I hope March twenty-nine, I hope that meeting, yeah, I hope when they come to the meeting, they're gonna have an answer for us.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't know, we haven't dealt with them enough to know whether they're liable to come with an answer or not.
They didn't guarantee an answer, but it was a good, it was a good meeting, got the sense that they were gonna do their homework and come back with an answer.
Good, okay. All right.
Thank you.
Yep.
We're good.
Um, so the plan that we presented, I have a lot of detail below, but I just wanted to go over what I, what, what we consider the risks of this plan, so do you guys have planned risks next, or do you have a comparison to last year? Do you have this comparison to last year?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that then, let, let, let's take a look at that, because I, I know that, um, it, it should be on all of our minds that we uh, try not to grow the expenses of the school more than we need to, and then John Cronin, uh, you know, on behalf of the county, said that we should try to do a, a zero-based budget, or, um, whatever the term of art is.
Maintenance.
Maintenance budget, there you go, he's back there, uh, the maintenance budget. Uh, and we, and we did certainly not discard that, as a matter of fact, there are a lot of lines on the, um, uh, we have a lot of budget lines, as you guys know, we, we, we always give you like five pages, show you every single line in the school, even, you know, thousand dollar line. This year, the, if you compare the FY twenty-four budget with the FY twenty-three budget, there are forty lines that have less spending than, than we had budgeted for FY twenty-three. So we are not adding, we're not just adding, you know what I mean, like, we're, we're, we're trying to consider whether we need to continue to budget things that we've been budgeting for years, you know, there, I think there was a default in the school that said, oh, last year I had five thousand, another five thousand, last year I had two thousand, another two thousand. Right, so I, I, we have challenged as part of our budget process, do you really need this? You didn't even spend this last year, why do you keep putting two thousand dollars in here? When you never spent it. Right, so we, we, we've pushed back, even things that, you know, historically, we budgeted at a certain level, and I'm like, last two or three years, we haven't spent that much, so I'm not budgeting at that level anymore. Even though, you know, that's an easy default, is to say, oh, well, just leave the forty thousand dollars of overtime we had last year. Um, so I, I, even though, it, you, you know, it did, I'm not gonna jump up and down about how much expenses have grown, because they've grown a decent amount, I'm just telling you that we're trying to do an objective process where we consider things that have been, you know, taken for granted in the past, or not sacred cows, but you know what I mean, like, we were trying to look at everything now and actually consider things. So, um, what you see here is, is a deeper, pretty decent expense growth, uh, I don't want to dwell on revenue, but, uh, on the expense side, it's mostly driven by personnel, as you can see, a big part of it is this, this top two lines, teacher salaries and non-union salaries. Right, we'll get to that, details back that, particularly the non-union details, because I think that's where you guys would have the most input, because the teachers, we can't do, uh, much with, we have a good contract, I, we're, I'm continued to be very proud of the contract that we, uh, negotiated, but, um, a three and a half percent cost of living increase was part of that for this year for, for our teachers. Right, which is a little different than for most of the county, or for the rest of the county. Uh, non-union, we, for the most part, have used the two point five percent that you guys directed us to last meeting. Uh, the exceptions being the, uh, direct reports of, of John Martin, which there was a little bit of flexibility, and we'll, you'll, you'll have to see those explicitly. One of the things to point out is the, is the salary reserve for retirement.
Yeah.
Last year was ten thousand, this year it's a hundred thousand. We have a lot of, we have a lot of, uh, retirements coming up, and as you may or may not know, we also have an issue with, uh, 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 something that we did in the past that might end up costing us some money going forward, had to do with an interpretation of a policy, or an implementation of a policy. So we want to be prepared for that. We, I have a list of the, of the non-union people that are set to retire, it's the, the farm director, the food service director, uh, the administrative assistant to the superintendent. It's, and a couple of teachers, and a, and a non-teacher, so we have, we have, we have a decent amount, and I think that's gonna be the future for us, as, as, not so much on the non, uh, teacher side, but at least on the teacher side, I think we're, we're gonna have a decent amount of, uh, retirements coming up.
Can you?
Those can be individually.
Are you comfortable enough, if you're comfortable, in this setting, explaining what do you mean in terms of the language thing, or is that more summary, more, more appropriate for executive session?
Uh, was discussed last, uh, two weeks ago, it was discussed in the Commissioner's meeting.
Okay, okay, okay.
Let, let me ask a general question on the hundred thousand.
Yes.
This is money in reserve because it's a payout due to these people.
Potentially.
Potentially, yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I applaud you for putting it in, because we've talked about it here, we, in the past, haven't done a good job, and, but we're starting to, to, to make department heads tell us, I mean, we can't go to the person, because you don't know, and other things happen. So that give or take, that's money that they will be owed, unaccounted.
At the, yeah, well, we have conservative, worst-case scenario kind of thing, but yeah.
I don't have a lot, I have last year's school budget, but did we, does that line been funded before?
Uh, yeah, I think every year, two, last year, we set aside ten thousand dollars, with the current year that we're in, we didn't use it. The year before, we set aside a certain amount of money, but it was, well, we spent a decent amount more than that.
Okay.
Than what we had budgeted.
I applaud you for trying to do it, because uh, you know, it's difficult mid, midstream to get these bonds, but certainly these people are entitled to it.
And sometimes you get years like that, you might get.
Yes, exactly, and that doesn't mean next year we'll be back to twenty thousand, yeah.
At least you're thinking that putting it in is good.
Yeah.
I just wonder, I forgot, we had talked about that already.
The other big expense increase is down there in the equipment line, and that's what I talked about, is us trying to buy pieces of equipment, we've been putting off for years and years, in some cases, it's farm equipment, in some cases, it's small capital. Um, and one, and one real big change, uh, that we decided to do this year is we have fifty-one thousand dollars in that equipment line that's for new Chromebook computers. And that's a, an ongoing expense of the school every year that we have to spend on the freshmen when they come in to buy their computers. So the way it works is we have a one-to-one program, we buy computers for every freshman that comes in, we, we, we sign it out to that freshman, that freshman's responsible to keep it for four years, not break it, use it to the extent they want to as part of their school supplies, and then they give it back to the school at the end of four years. If they break it, if they break the screen, if they lose it, then we charge them. And we have a successful program of charging people for the damage that they've done. Um, and then, but the problem is at the end of four years, instead of, we get it back, but it's not worth anything.
It's probably worthless.
It's, it is, it's basically worthless, so that's why this fifty thousand dollars is an every-year cost of the school to buy the freshman computers. Right, and it's every year, the, 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 I'm drawing attention to it, because in the past, we didn't own up to that, of that obligation, we put it into grants, or we put it into capital, we put it in places where it didn't have to go through the operating expenses of the school. And this year, we decided, you know what, we need this as an operating expense of the school, we need to own up to and admit to, this is a cost of, of running.
So a student comes in this, next, next year.
Yeah.
In the fall, which is great, they get a Chromebook, right?
Yeah.
And they have it for four years.
Yes, the same.
Would it make sense, do they consider this? Give them the option to buy it, when they, they take it with them off the couch, if it's not, like you said.
Yeah.
Would that be something to think about?
They would, I don't know if anybody would, because Peter's right, it's pretty worthless, but at the end of four years, just some wear and tear, yeah, I, I, we'd have to ask.
What do you guys do with all the old ones?
Um, they're saved for parts or for emergency use, and sometimes there's, there's software associated in them that literally makes them useless, because the software also has an ex, and has an expiration date, it's not just the hardware. But Mark is pretty good, Mark, our, um, I T, I, I T Director, he's pretty good at harvesting what he can from an old, uh, even if it's a charger, even if it's the screen, you know, that he knows how to replace himself, we don't pay somebody to replace the screens, he orders the screens from Amazon and puts them in himself with his own tools. You know, so we, we, he, he's pretty, we're, we're pretty conscientious about keeping the cost down of those things. So there, there's definitely a decent increase, and, and I don't want to pretend that there isn't, expense increase here.
Forty-six.
Right? Yeah, yeah, which, uh, on a percentage basis, is a, is a decent increase. You know? Um, so if there are any questions, I think it's, it's worth taking a quick flip over to what I'm assuming, uh, Richard, is gonna be the thing of interest, which is non-union salaries? Because I don't think teachers are that interesting, we have some open positions, the only personnel change that we have in teachers is, is, I think was discussed last time, John, do you remember if we discussed this last time, which was a new science.
We did not.
Adding a half of a science teacher. Do you want to discuss the need for that, or the, the, the reasoning behind that change?
Just tell what page you want.
Uh, it does have a page number, it's the beginning of the, it's the beginning of the teacher's.
The, Lee, hold on?
Yeah, Lee Head, yes.
Okay, I got it, yeah, okay, good.
I, I'll give a quick background, but then I would ask Robin to chime in, um.
Hello, and see you back there.
This year, our, uh, academic assistant principal, Sean Crowley, requested two positions, one was a science position, and one was a social studies position, because by comparison to the math and English departments, they're short. Therefore, they have larger class sizes, and we are a little bit hamstrung as to the offerings, particularly with regard to electives, that we can put on the table for kids. So Sean's goal was to, um, add two bodies, and we thought it would be good to add, well, we decided to add the one in the science department.
Do you have anything to add?
Um, no, I think you did a great job of explaining it, I think, this has been an ask of Sean's for a couple of years now, um, because obviously, science is an MCAS subject, um, and the other two, call it core subjects, um, have more teachers in their department, and adding an additional person will allow us to offer additional courses for students, um, sections essentially, um, so that we can support them where they need and the types of levels of courses that the students need.
Robin, does this also affect our coverage by vocational teachers of science classes, is that worth talking about?
Um, we, we no longer do that with the change of schedule, um, but that is, that is a a benefit, yes, in the past, the way that we, they kind of band-aided, for lack of a better term, that department is that, you know, we have an entire vocational, um, crew that have science degrees, and so, in addition to a vocational class, they used to teach biology or physics, or another science class, usually biology, um, so that we could offer, uh, an additional section, uh, for students to enter.
Got a question? So, um, in addition to having additional offerings, which would be great, although I didn't see that in that proposed program of studies for next year, I don't think I did, I could be wrong, but we had that presented by the principal, I think, our last meeting, I thought. So that would be something we'd be looking forward to coming up.
Yeah, we would have to.
We'd have to, you know.
We'd have to amend the program of studies.
Which is great, no, this is great, but I'm wondering about, would there be a concurrent, uh, decrease in class size too, with additional teachers? Are we at that point where we need to justify it that way? Oh, you know, besides offering, something.
Additional offerings in science would mostly come in the senior year, because that's where they have the, the, the ability to take it. Um, they do biology, chem, and then, um, usually physics, and they have their seniors, but really, we're looking to expand biology, chemistry, um, and as you know, the challenge with science teachers is that they're licensed specific. So you can't just hire a science teacher and have them teach whatever course we need, we need to hire either a biology licensed teacher or a chemistry teacher. Uh, so that's where there's additional, um, we kind of get strapped a little bit, especially in science, because of the licensing.
Although they can teach one subject out of their area, can't they?
They can.
Or they changed that rule too, since, no, they can do one.
And that's where we get a lot of the science electives for senior year, um, they're more, you know, what the teachers' interests are, and
Yeah, right.
We have, you know, brain and behavior, forensics, um, engineering, so that's where they can kind of teach that separate. can kind of teach that separate one, but really, it's biology and chemistry that we need to the additional room.
But we should flip that. That's great. Great. Did you have a question, Mr. Shane?
So there's two science, one was there and one is a n- a new one entirely. Was there only one science teacher last year?
Actually, two open science.
No, that there are multiple science teachers, but there there were two open positions. One is.
And you're actively.
Yeah, we're gonna add a science teacher and we're also going to replace a science teacher as one of our science teachers.
Okay, yeah, so they will obviously need to be carried along. Is the same true for the Agmath teacher?
Yes, that's the current person that's retiring. That's a replacement.
I understand.
It's really a net of just one new person.
Yeah, actually, only about, actually, only a half of a person, because if you look up there, we we had two and a half people teaching phys ed and we're we're gonna reduce that.
Okay.
Of a person. We're only gonna have two two people teaching phys ed.
Gotcha. Yeah.
Okay. And after that is, I think we can skip uh stipends, stipends I don't think are very interesting. And so we can talk about uh non-union employees, which it looks like this. Commissioner, Chairman Fady asked me to try to make it bigger, which I tried to make it bigger, but we have succeeded well enough. One of the, one of the things I do want to point out before John perhaps talks about uh salaries or salary theory or whatever you guys want to ask is you'll see in bold there around the middle, the speech pathologists and the interventionists uh are in there. They look like they're brand new positions because there's no last year number. They'll stand out because there's no last year number to them. They're about a third of the way down. You see that?
Right, yeah.
But those are not truly new positions. Those are positions that we had paid for by grants historically. And that's a, that's a, that's a risky way to work, because every year the grant, you have to find a different grant. One of them was um paid for by a grant that's expiring, one of the COVID nineteen S R grants. So uh we felt like it was time to put these people into the run rate of the school and to acknowledge that they're important, ongoing positions in the school that we can fund ourselves rather than rely on grants to fund. I mean, gr- funding uh um salaried position through grants is is a risky way to run an organization and and some some um some grants strict had pro- prohibitions against that. I mean, Robin's teaching me about Perkins, which she knows very well, but Perkins, for instance, has a prohibition, says you cannot have a position in Perkins for longer than a a certain period of time, you know, paid for by Perkins. So we're trying to we're we're changing in subtle ways the way the school accounting for things and being run financially by taking things that had been shoved and stowed into grants in the past and saying, this is an ongoing cost of the school. It's not a grant. It can't be paid for by a grant. Right? We did this a couple of years ago with a psychiatrist, the psychologist who was originally in the grant, and then we put them into the school. Right? Now we've taken two more positions. These are part-time positions. These are not full-time positions. Yeah, these are part-time positions. Um, I think they'll be continued to be maybe um consultants rather than employees, but um we're we're gonna, we 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 made a conscious decision to put a little bit more into our run rate of the school as opposed to stowing them away in grants, which is not sustainable.
So one I thought, if I may, that's good. I I think that's smart. It makes sense. But would there also be any advantage to again, looking at again, some funding for something else that we might be able to get? Like, we we have the, you're putting it in the budget, I support it, but whereas we got money from, what was it, S D?
S R.
S R, S R. And could there be other opportunities to consider to even make our program even stronger? Is there something else out there? I don't know. Just a thought. You know what I'm saying? Rather than give that up, maybe another vehicle for something? We can think of, you know, think of.
This, the 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 cost that you had planned on putting in grants and had done historically is now gonna be available, since we're not paying these salaries. We'll have available more money to spend in special education, and we can take that S R three money and send it in a different direction than paying for this person's salary. Because they pulled this person out.
That's what I'm trying to say.
We'll, we still have that dollar figure sitting over there.
Oh, okay. We're not giving them the money.
Oh, okay, good.
Not gonna pay them back. These costs.
Terrific. Good.
All right, so all of the uh the salary that you suggested for the superintendent is here at the top of the page. And all of the salaries proposed by the superintendent for for his direct reports are also on this page. Um, I think those are the significant changes uh that ought to be ought to be discussed. Uh, the rest of it is mostly the two and a half percent with one, I think, position change and then a bunch of open positions that we have to uh make a guess at what we'll end up paying for them.
Okay, so at the last uh trustees meeting, you had asked me to make recommendations with regard to administrator salaries. So what you see there are my recommendations. One of the things I wanted to do from very early on, uh when I started here, uh after I recognized the issue, was to develop an administrator's salary schedule that made sense and to slot people in um next to dollar figures that were uh equitable compared to one another. Because what we had a year and a half ago, two years ago, that was not the case. The the salaries did not make sense when you compared what one person's role and responsibility was to another. And these numbers get us, in my opinion, to that spot. So that was one criteria I looked at in developing these numbers. The second criteria I looked at uh was comparables uh in fifteen different vocational schools. So, and I don't, I don't know that we necessarily want to go through each one of these figures, but if you'd like to, we can. But for example, of the fifteen vocational schools that I looked at, the principal's range for salary was a hundred and eleven thousand dollars to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. You look at the number that I've proposed for our principal, you see that's neatly in the middle there. If you look at uh student services numbers over the course of those fifteen vocational schools, that number ranged from ninety one thousand to a hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars. And again, we we uh restructured and reorganized our special ed program to become the student services program. So uh Kim Catan Skelly has taken on more responsibilities. She's supervising more people as a result of the change in her title and our reorganization. So again, I think her number fits nicely uh into into this salary schedule. Uh, the two assistants, like the same process, assistant principals uh range from seventy six thousand to a hundred and forty thousand. Uh, tech director is anywhere from sixty to a hundred and thirty thousand. Facilities manager is eighty to a hundred and thirty thousand, and I can provide these numbers for you if you would like. And a business manager ranges from a hundred to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And I think if you put our number, our my proposed number next to those numbers, we're we fall more or less smack dab in the middle of those ranges.
Does your use, John, if I may, uh like you look at vocational schools and the other agricultural schools?
All the other, all the other ag schools are.
What hap- okay, I have to, what's a farm per uh, was it farm farm manager?
Farm manager.
And you're you're proposing a cut? Am I reading that right?
Uh-huh.
There's a reduction.
Yes and no.
It's open. So is that?
Our current farm manager is retiring, so we're we're operating on the assumption that her replacement will come in at a lower salary.
I see, okay.
I I get a question along the same lines.
Okay.
Down at the, near the bottom.
Wait, let me finish, Joe, for a second. Does that pay though appropriate to again, attract a new person in there?
You know, that's another criteria that I I think is important to look at when we're looking at administrators, teachers, as well as all the other support staff that we have. We we need to be competitive. We need to remain competitive.
That's all I'm asking.
And we want to be an attractive place for people to to apply.
Okay.
Um, I I think that's a fair number, but we don't have a lot of comps.
Yeah, yeah, that's it. Yeah, all right. We'll see how it goes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shane.
Thank you.
Oh, can I just say, can I just say one thing? One of the things that that we're also doing is every time we have an open position, we are considering where that position ought to be in the school's compensation. We're talking about non-union employees now. Non-teachers, non-administrators, so it would be the other group. So that that's also different. So that's why you'll see maybe in some cases the the salary being higher for the replacement than the existing person. In other places, you'll see the salary being lower than the existing person. Because we're trying to rationalize what we pay people relative to other people in the school. So for a job like the farm farm manager, that that's a pretty important and and difficult job. So we know that that needs to be near the top of our salary structure for non-administrators and other jobs, we probably feel less less need to compensate than than prior administrations did. So we're trying to, we've got a list of every job that's a non-union job in the school, and we've got a a salary uh range for each one of those jobs. Right? So we're gonna, and obviously, uh with with all compensation, it's market-driven. You, nobody sets a market because no one's big enough to set compensation market. So John and I are gonna find out whether what we've set aside for the farm manager is good. And we also have a couple of, we also have, we believe, internal interest in the job. But which usually, you know, provides some salary benefit to get somebody promoted internally.
All good. Mr. Shane? Mr. Shane?
Food service director is Craig, correct?
Yes, sir.
And he's sit, announced he's retiring?
Yes, sir.
And the chef is someone that was hired this year? Was he?
Yes.
Was the chef new this year?
Yes, that was a new position that you guys approved for FY twenty-three. Yes, we tried to.
So that's why it had a half a salary again.
It it's.
Is that correct or is that the?
Oh, no, that's a salary. That's a salary of the chef.
Weird is one, the chef is still, the chef is here and Craig is retiring, or leaving. I think he's retiring.
Retiring?
Yeah.
And uh the chef came and went unfortunately, so that's an open position for us.
So we're looking for a chef.
We're looking for a chef, yeah.
Still, still waiting for Craig, whenever Craig goes in summer. Does he go in summer?
Yeah, he's he's gonna go at the end of the school year.
And we get food service directors the same way we get everyone else. From other schools, but maybe not, maybe they.
Yeah.
Right.
It's a, it's a, it's a.
So we need to change the pace from working
Yeah.
long nights and weekends.
That's right, that's where, that's where Craig came from.
Weekends and nights, right, is is a, is usually a part of that food service business. So switch the day. The other thing is, because we have a have a small staff uh uh and 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 what a single school on a single site, it gives a person who 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 is currently a food service director for maybe a a a traditional school district who's very far removed from making food, very far removed from doing the actual work with students. It it I I found that it's appealing for them to say, look, I get back into the kitchen. I'll be a food service director, but I will actually see kids and I'll actually be able to, you know, make change on a dime because we have a small school. Craig decides, you know, the day before, okay, I'm changing my menu for tomorrow. I'm gonna do something else because this this didn't come in. You know, so I I think there'll be some appeal to the job. I've hired for it once before in my charter school life. And I got a great person who was coming from the same thing. He had been a food service director in Watertown, and he didn't want that hassle anymore. He didn't want all the complications of being in a, in a, in a school district, a traditional school district. So he loved being in the in the kitchen again. And actually cooking. So I'm I'm hopeful. But it is a tough job, Mark. It's definitely a tough labor market, I should say. It's a tough labor market. I'm sure Mark is experiencing that too.
Yeah, yeah. Feel some personal pain from that.
All right. Any other questions? Any other comments? Questions, comments?
My last, my last, I was just to to bring us back to the risks that are associated with this plan, because every plan will have risks, right? And I don't want to uh us to enter into anything without without our eyes open. I think the biggest risk is what it's been since I came here, which is the mix of tuition, right? We're still not where we wanted to be. John and I had several goals, or John had shared several goals with me when I was hired, and one of them was to get less um to be more agnostic or more independent of whether somebody was in and out of county, right? And we haven't gotten there yet. We've made a tiny step because we started charging more in county than we used to, so that gets us a tiny step closer. But we still have that. We still have that risk. And and as I've shown you guys in numbers in the past, it doesn't take much to 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 swing from having a surplus to being break even, right? And our surplus is a little bit smaller now. Um, I, the tuition increase, I I'm not so worried about that. So far, we haven't gotten any pushback because we've shared the new rate. We haven't sent out a bill. You know, when you send out a bill, the rubber hits the road and then you'll then you can really potentially find out somebody's problems with what you're charging them. But we have informed everybody of next year's rate, right? Anybody that's got a student potentially coming to the school has already been informed of next year's rate. So we haven't gotten any negative feedback from that that's.
All the towns get notified. Tell me.
Exactly. All of the in and out of county towns get notified of our tuition. The day after, literally, Lauren does it the day after. You, you guys approved the tuition.
Can't say they didn't know.
I'm actually attending the Templeton Select Board meeting tonight.
Yeah, some snow out there. Be careful.
They they're, they were closed yesterday, but I guess it's gonna be open tonight.
Where do you have to go to?
I'm not gonna go. I'm just going.
Where is it?
Templeton.
Templeton.
Up off of Route Two.
They're not even, that's the one we don't have a student from right now, Joe.
Yeah, they're.
Are they looking to get?
It's an hour and fifteen minutes away.
We have an applicant, so we sent, John said we sent the letter and I got a call. I said, yeah, I'll be happy to explain it to you guys, but we don't even know if this kid's coming or not. She's only applied.
You 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 gave us a head up, heads up on three towns that don't have. But you have it in this year's group. I noticed three names here somewhere. It'll probably be right here.
Weedom, Wellesley, Brookline.
Brookline. Yeah, I saw that.
Well.
In Upper County?
Yeah.
Those are the ones where we don't have a lot.
It was like zero, one and.
I thought Cohasset.
It is zero, yeah.
Zero.
Yeah, it was zero, but.
Definitely Hopedale and Lakeville.
Those are the new ones, yeah. Those are our three new ones that haven't been, hadn't sent us students until FY twenty-three.
Is the tuition increase really that healthy?
Uh, it's eight percent, I think.
Is it eight percent?
Yeah, it's eight percent. Because last year's was a little suppressed because we didn't have our raises in last year. We did it before raises, and so we didn't want to go back and give them a new number, so we had to live with the number. So now they're gonna catch up, catch up sort of. Uh, the last risks, uh COVID-related grants, we talked about already. Those are phased, being phased out. And and we're conscient- consciously bringing things into our operating expenses because like we don't want them to just go away like the intervention interventionist, which is somebody that we've added related to COVID, but then we decided we want to keep in our plans. Uh, Commonwealth uh funding school lunches, it seems like they are gonna do that. That, since I've written this, they did come out with a budget that that includes it. So at some, at the very first budget that came out did not include school lunch funding. Um, but the second budget that came out does include school lunch funding, and the governor wants it, so there's just, there's a very good reason to believe that they'll continue with that.
That's the feeling we're getting.
And then last thing is our capital. We're we're in a little bit of a capital bind that's gonna be, you know, a a problem that's gonna hang around with us probably for years. Right? Because we do have buildings we want to replace. We have buildings and parts of buildings that we want to improve. Uh, John and I got a, uh, got a capital needs, facilities needs, uh, you know, list from our facilities manager, Pete Murphy. It was over five million dollars.
It was long.
Yeah, it was five pages long. Um, you know.
Was the baron on there?
Uh, no, I don't, I don't think there was anything so significant about the barn, and it, there was nothing about the cafeteria, which is probably a whole building we need to replace.
How so? How do we, how do we address that? What's our game plan? I know we have a certain amount of debt. We can't deal with it right now, but what's our, do we have a plan? Were we gonna look at that maybe as somewhat aimed for next year?
I think part of our strategic plan will be to try to figure out how we can deal with our bigger facilities needs, the bigger facilities. Uh, John Cronin believes that the opportunity to borrow isn't necessarily that far off. You know, that we won't be able to borrow again. And also, we're, we're really hoping to energize our our foundation slash alumni group, which we've never done, which we've never done.
For you though. So it be, it impacts our budget. The more surplus the Aggie can turn back to the county. And that's your answer. Does that help increase our ability to bond? Will that help us?
John Cronin is in a better position.
Can anyone comment for me to help me out here?
The Aggie surplus commissioner doesn't go back to the county. Um, it stays with the school. They can roll it forward year after year.
Okay.
Um, and with with respect to borrowing, is that the second question?
Right.
Um, I sent an email to the superintendent, the business manager, about a month ago. After looking at the debt schedule for the schools, um, I believe their 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 oldest debt retires in about, just about nine years, I believe, was give or take. And after that, there'll be a series of debt retirements, you know, as we approach twenty years out. So they've got a bit of a, uh, you know, runway, if you will, between now and the first um stage of debt retirement. But as I suggested in the email, between now and then would be a good time to build up that reserve commissioner stating to match whatever borrowing capacity that 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 particular opportunity presents, you know, hopefully within ten years.
So if I'm, I'm understanding this right, maybe help me out a little bit. So they have, we have different debt for different things that the Aggie did.
Five different.
Like McFarland building or, right, things like that. So uh, the county pays that, the treasurer, obviously. Treasurer pays that bill.
But the schools reimburse. The schools are paying the debt on that, on that, on that.
Where's that showing now? Is that showing?
Yeah, it's in, in, in the indirect section, there's a debt line. It's a million dollars, a little over a million dollars.
Just like a personality mortgage, which is a crazy question, throwing it out there. Would it make sense to increase that payment? To just facilitate the debt getting down? I'm trying to say, how do we, we want to get to that next step, right? It's like we have a mortgage. You, you want to pay it down a little quicker. Is there a way to do that?
We were, we were looking at doing that about a year ago, you may recall, when we had a sizable surplus commissioner, and we were dissuaded from doing that by our bond council because the rates that we were getting for the bond were so, so affordable.
Okay.
Um, it was, it was non.
And I can understand that too. Okay, it's just a thought, though. It's just, you know, just kicking it out.
More importantly, I mean, as rates come and go, over the next ten to twenty years, will the treasurer be always open to refinancing that debt? Or or somehow um consolidating it to save, save cash? That's a treasurer's question. And and I think that goes to your economic thinking about if I was a homeowner, I'd be looking to constantly refi and leverage what I can from the, from the latest line of credit costs.
Well, if you recall, and you weren't, weren't here, but I did say, and I think it's. Well, if you recall, and you weren't, weren't here, but I did say, and I think it's important more than ever, we should have a strategic plan that put in place, that's something one of, one of my goals, our goals. So you talked, we talked about that, we're gonna, that could be part of our discussion. For a strategic plan for the school to have that and to look at how we're gonna get, you know, to the next step, so, okay, that helps me out a little bit though. That surplus doesn't go back to the county. That stays within our budget here.
Yeah, rolls forward.
It rolls forward, okay, thank you.
If I may?
Thank you.
Um, surplus, John, today, it's, was it a million and a half or, do you know?
For the school?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know much, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure. I don't think it's that big. Based on what we're hearing, um.
You're giving me a schedule when.
Right, yeah, I think it was less than a hundred, half of a million dollars. I think it was in hundreds of thousands of dollars, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
It's, it's in the middle of that Dussey issue.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the key, that big meeting, because it ended a month, right?
That's why I, I, alright.
Okay. Good job. What else, yeah?
That's it, our presentation.
Alright.
For our trustees.
Mr. Shea?
Question.
Yep.
At one time, recently.
That's good.
When we were talking about needing a new cafeteria slash library on that, that building. We talked about hiring some of the, uh, I said, you know, review it and talk about it. We put it in and then we took it out, uh, refresh my memory.
That's right, yes.
We requested it, uh, the county gave it to us and then at the end of the day, we decided after looking at our finances that we put, we put the cart before the horse.
Okay.
So, you know, we, we could've gone forward with a feasibility study, but by the time we'd actually be able to start bringing a wrecking ball against the side of that building, those numbers would be irrelevant, so.
Okay, alright, because.
A little too ambitious.
Without opening my trap. That issue is, is particular to the school. When we look at all our courts and everything, we have similar issues, you know. And we think Quincy is gonna take care of itself. And we've been, we've been acutely aware of all of our buildings and we're kind of, we're, we're kind of looking at a way to hire someone to do all our buildings. I would say if all our buildings are all our buildings, it would include anything there too. Or, you know, it needs this, this and this, it needs to be torn down, it's okay.
Yeah.
With, with some of this money that's.
We could, we could pile that on, you said the facility manager made a presentation too, right? So we'd look at what his priority was and use that with our thing going forward, rather, we don't reinvent the wheel, you know what I'm saying? If he's already done it, that would be, if cafeteria is number one, you know, that's, so be it, but.
Yeah.
That would help us, you know?
We have four buildings that are in pretty rough shape, to be perfectly honest with you. The cafeteria is one, the livestock barn is two. The plant in animal science building is three. And then the old, what was, uh, known as the old dairy barn, which is our hay storage area now. All four of those are.
And the livestock barn's being built though.
We, we have a plan.
We have a plan for.
We have a plan for that, we, we still are looking at money.
Right, of course.
But we, we're having meetings about that one.
Okay. Good. What's the actual budget number though, John? Is it sixteen, eight, three, two? Is that the budget? Where are you voting?
Yeah.
Is that the actual number there?
Yeah.
Alright, so according to our, is, is there any other discussion? That anybody else wanna make a comment on the budget of the Norfolk Aggie School to fiscal twenty-four? If we don't have any, the chair, would entertain a motion to, to, uh, approve the budget as presented and as discussed, any amount of sixteen million, eight hundred thirty-two thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars. Did I make the wrong suggestion?
I'm sorry, are you, are you?
I saw, on the thing, it says budget presentation, discussion and vote by the trustees. Both, so both, trustees have to vote it.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
No, I can't, I'm just, will you make that motion? Did you make that? Alright, Mr. Parrish has moved that the budget, uh, for fiscal twenty-four be sixteen million, eight thirty-two, three hundred ninety-five dollars. Seconded by Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Alright, motion made and seconded. Any further questions?
So. Okay, so the other, the other budgets that we've looked at. So you get the.
Take them under advisement.
Yeah, we take, we've taken them under advisement. This one, we're not. This one, you're, you're voting at the trustee level.
Using the trustee.
Correct, right.
We've voted this today.
Okay, but, but that doesn't mean it goes through the county commissioners as.
No, my understanding is we're taking this under advisement. We're gonna vote, trustees, we're now trustees. We're voting this right now.
We haven't.
And then the commissioners, not gonna presuppose, but like all our other budgets, we're taking under advisement.
So the county commissioners, if they chose, could come up with other numbers?
Uh, I suppose. I mean.
Yeah, right.
I believe that we're on the right track here, Mr. Chan.
Right.
We're voting it as the agricultural board.
The trustee board, right.
Then I think in a regular meeting, before we go back into the public hearing, we should vote to take the Aggie school under advisement as passed by the.
Right, cuz we've done it for all the other budgets as commissioners.
I mean.
Right.
We talk about, I say this every meeting, I don't wanna repetition, we're working, we're working. I mean, what if there's a a transposition error? One year we had a million dollar error. And, and I think Mike Malhanfield or someone found it the last day, way beyond this process. I mean, we looked kinda stupid going to the
Well.
The outside, a million dollar.
Share, share, I'm gonna ask you.
That's why we take it under advisement.
When are we, when are we, assuming, when are we gonna be voting as commissioners, all the budgets? Wasn't it twenty-ninth when I'm back? Wasn't it April? Twenty-nine, right?
The twenty-ninth.
And when's that DESI meeting? Twenty-eighth?
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth, oh, okay, alright. Alright, right, okay.
If I'm wrong.
That's what I thought we were doing. I'm being honest.
I agree.
We're, we're, we're trustees right now and I wanna have a vote taken on this.
And I'm gonna second it.
Right, thank you, alright. Peter, that clear for you?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so all in favor of the motion made by Mr. Parrish, uh, I guess with the, with remote, I gotta call him, Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
I'm, I'm really on the fence cuz a lot of these numbers are just new to me.
Okay.
Um.
I understand that. You prefer to stay?
Yeah, I'll stay. It's, it's not, it's not that I'm against it, it's just that I, I, I didn't, I didn't have enough, this is new to me, so, so I'll stay.
Okay, was it not explained maybe not properly by me?
No, 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 no.
Chairman or by Mr. Martin?
No, it's, no, it's fine, but I, I just wanted more time to think about it, that's all.
I'm gonna vote yes.
Okay.
So the motion does carry by a vote of three, zero, one, and I think Matt Sheehan still didn't join us, correct?
Correct.
And we be root to Matt. Okay, so that has taken, the vote has been taken.
Yeah.
And according to my wonderful script, no further business to conduct. Uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting, how's that, of the Norfolk County Agricultural Trustees about a minute before two o'clock. Mr. Parrish makes that motion?
I agree with that.
Wonderful. Mr. Shea seconded?
I seconded.
Alright, motion made and seconded, all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye? And we stand adjourned, we thank you very much.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, good job.
We'll be in a one minute.
They were sent to you on Friday. Those numbers were sent to you on Friday.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see it.
Am I sending, are we sending it to the right place? I'm sending it, we were told to send it to the trustees.
That's what they told me, that's what they told us, you have to send. We were advised by legal council that all things, the trustees have to be sent to the trustees.
My laptop.
I didn't accept that.
I can't get, I need to figure out, I need to have the IP.
Thank you.
Give me the step by step, of how to set that up. My home computer has it, go home, I could go back and do it with you? Is that what I'm going, going away?
I'd almost rather have you.
I have no email for the library. I need to get that step by step.
I'll phone the caller.
Did you happen to check?
I have the names on my list, I will do it.
Good job. Alright, thank you, John, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome, thank you. Just a quick word to the wise, Josh Coleman advised us, unless you want your, the other account subject to.
Yeah, okay. Oh, we're meeting, oh, shoot. I didn't mention that. I should've mentioned it. The April third.
Cuz if there's an issue.
Probably not gonna happen.
They're gonna look at your, your personal.
He could've helped us, able to be here.
I said to John.
April third is out.
Let's say breakfast, right?
Yes, moving into May, but I haven't heard from.
And our next meeting's April fifth, you're not gonna be there.
Let's take a break.
Alright, we're in, we're gonna have a five minute research.
Yeah, let's do a research. April third, uh, is not gonna happen at the moment. Oh, thank you.
The public viewing copy of the budget has been available in our offices and on the county website for inspection. The chair will now open and call upon any member of the public who wishes to make a public comment or make themselves known either here or in the commissioner's room or by raising their hand via Zoom. So we're now open for a public comment on the fiscal year twenty-four budget. Any comment whatsoever on the twenty-four budget now is the time to make it.
Would you like me to make some remarks?
Director Cronin will make some remarks, but if anyone wants to make any comments, we'll entertain them. Director Cronin.
Thank you briefly, Commissioner Shea, as you indicated, this particular budget's been available for public view. Um, this is a document that is, uh, transitory, it's on its way to becoming the FY twenty-four budget for FY uh, twenty-four beginning July first. It represents, and the viewers can see, the submissions of the department heads that have prepared their documents and submitted them to you for your consideration. Uh, currently, I just a few observations to know, the publicly viewed budget is out of balance by one million ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. The deficiency is caused by two primary cost drivers. Number one is the healthcare costs arising two hundred ninety-seven thousand, three hundred twenty-three dollars above FY twenty-two expenditure levels. Excuse me. Further, the retirement contribution costs, as the commissioners are aware, are also rising uh, four hundred fifty-six thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars above FY twenty-two expenditure levels. The revenue model that is in this public view, uh, are relatively flat compared to FY twenty-three. Um, I'll be updating several of the revenue packages over the next couple of weeks, uh, before I appear before you on March twenty-ninth with a balanced budget. The department budgets, um, have been reviewed by the Norfolk County Commission and fiscal staff. Um, there will be modifications made to balance this budget. And then finally, this public view budget reflects the original Norfolk County Agricultural High School budget submission that was placed, um, into the system on February seventh. Certain factors since then have emerged that introduce a new Norfolk County Agricultural High School budget um, that was presented earlier to the trustees, uh, that will be incorporated into the final proposed budget by the end of the month. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody who has any comment on the fiscal twenty-four Norfolk County budget?
That budget, uh, reflects also, Mr. Chairman, any proposed increases for different personnel, as well as coal raises, things like that. It's all reflected in there.
It is.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, if I can make a recommendation? Uh, in consideration of the fact that the trustees just met and took a vote on the school's FY twenty-four budget, it may be appropriate at this time for the commissioners to take that, uh, particular request under advisement as you did the other budgets, um.
I, 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 I think it's a great idea, but I'd, I'd like to close the public hearing portion, then do it.
The problem with that is I don't know that you have, um, the opportunity under the general agenda to take that matter under consideration.
Okay. We'll take it under consideration and write before we close the public hearings. I don't, I don't disagree, I'm just questioning.
Question for John, our director, uh, Mr. Chairman, through you, of course, if we, uh, had any other changes or other modifications to any budgets, uh, we could still do it at a later time, correct? This isn't doing, just because we're closing the hearing, it just gives us more time to review.
And we're trying to keep to the schedule.
Okay.
But we've always had, I don't know, we, you know, we, 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 we have some time, but it's.
Yeah, that's a great question. Every budget is, is a snapshot, you know, even the approved budgets are snapshots, they change and you may recall harkening back a year ago, the school's budget changed quite a lot because of, um, unexpectedly high revenues and they have modified their budget in the fall of twenty twenty-two, uh, for the fiscal year twenty-three, so.
Okay.
I view it as an iterative process, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if you want, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing if you're ready.
There's no further, uh, comment, uh, we'll make a motion to close the public hearing, we've been a call, before I close, I wanna again call and direct Cronin. You, you gave us the rest of the timeline.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're all set.
And, and, I'm sorry, John, what were you, what were you getting at just then? So I think we need to also have the trustees', um, budget vote earlier brought in.
Before we close?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
The aforementioned school budget needs to be taken under consideration.
I may also move. I move that it be taken under consideration.
Oh, under consideration, okay, I thought you were gonna vote today. Uh, second, right.
Okay, based on our, our policy of taking all, all, uh, budgets under consideration, and we didn't conclude the school till today. I'm gonna entertain the motion and properly second it to take the school budget under consideration. Uh, with the veneer towards Director Cronin's for earlier comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'll make, take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing, Mr. Chairman, so fiscal twenty-four budget.
Second.
The chair declares that the public hearing is closed and we'll now move to the rest of our regular agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, aye, thank you. If we have no objection, we're gonna jump to item number sixteen, which is another executive session relative to collective bargaining. We have our attorney on the line. I'm gonna ask Bill to make the appropriate, uh, changes in the Zoom portion of the meeting and I'll need to take a motion uh, under purpose three.
Is Scott? I don't see Scott's name up there.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's.
Oh, sorry, Michelle.
It's Michelle, Michelle's there.
Hi, Michelle.
I'm confused, we.
What?
I thought we told Scott he was on executive session.
I talked to him, he, we don't need him. Um, the, the updates from Scott, I'll bring in under the.
Oh, okay, alright, okay, okay.
Michelle is here though.
Okay, fine. So is that motion made?
No, we need to make a separate one.
You wanna make the motion?
Go ahead, Peter.
Alright.
Please.
It's right there.
Okay, item sixteen, I make a motion, we move into executive session pursuant to purposes three and six, master and launch chapter thirty A, so, uh, section twenty-one, subsection A, subsection one, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, as well as to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body and the chair so declares, so move.
I'll second the motion made by Commissioner Collins.
Motion made and seconded, we move to executive session, Commissioner Stady.
We will be coming back.
We're coming back for purposes of finishing our regularly scheduled meeting, agenda items seven through fifteen.
That's it. Is that too loud?[1634.94]
That's fine. Thank you. We're back on the record for our regularly scheduled meeting of March 15th, 2023. Commissioners, I'm gonna direct your attention to item number four on the regular meeting's agenda. Minutes of.
Oh, yes. Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move the approval of the meeting minutes of March 8th, open session. Second. Presented.
Motion made and seconded on the meeting's acceptance of the minutes of March 8th, 2023 for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Number five was taken care of on the public hearing on the fiscal 24 budget, which was held at 1:05 PM. Number six, public comment on this meeting. Is there any public comment on this meeting? Last call for public comment on this meeting. Seeing none, we'll move to number seven. Old business, we have none. We have one personnel matter for consideration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'll move the notice of address change. Alara Tzatzkazian? Forgive me if I pronounced that wrong, of Walt M. S., and that is effective 3/9/23.
Second.
Motion made and seconded relative to a change of address for one of our teachers at the Norfolk Aggie School. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you.
Don't have number nine. Can we move on number nine later?
Payroll expense.
We're getting.
We don't have that.
Move, okay.
Yeah, we'll get that.
Number 10, report on the American Rescue Plan Act.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Shays. Briefly, two items for the commissioners. First, be advised, the Norfolk County. The Norfolk County Treasurer, Michael Bellotti, met with myself, his assistant, and Assistant Buckley a couple of weeks ago. Interested in developing a new ARPA project for financial literacy in Norfolk County. I asked him to reduce his idea to a brief scope so that we could test the eligibility. He did. The concept that the treasurer is interested in doing would be approximately $50,000. The concept is eligible under the final rule, so I've given Assistant Treasurer Diaria additional questions for clarity and depth, so that we can put together a proper ARPA grant on behalf of Treasurer Bellotti and financial literacy. The second item, relative to, I believe it's a meeting we held a month or so ago. Commissioner Stady had brought forth the Alzheimer's Association for an informational meeting. From that came further discussion with the executive director, Mr. Jim Westler. He and I talked at length about some ARPA concepts that the commission, this commission could work with the Alzheimer's Association on developing. In your packet is proposal from Mr. Wester that we received yesterday. Similar to the treasurer's concept, this one is currently being evaluated by Clifton Larson. Upon initial review, it appears to be a very comprehensive, very thorough plan of advancing the Alzheimer's message of early detection and handling any Alzheimer's-related impacts on families and so forth. I'd encourage the commissioners to review the packet. If they have any questions, let me know. But similar, again, to the treasurer's application, I will come back with a ARPA proposal if it is prepared, excuse me, approved, we'll put it into the portal and fund it. This particular request is just under $250,000. That is informational only at this time. If you have any questions, again, just get back to me if we can.
I, all I got was this intention here. Is that what you're talking about?
Yep, it's a multi-page proposal.
Okay.
Yep.
Wow.
You're doing a nice job.
Could this be, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Could this be broken into categories? Perhaps we want a lot, a certain amount, not the whole $250,000?
If we want to modify it, yes, we can.
Okay.
Yes.
Can we talk about Treasurer Bellotti? Do you have any insight as to what that might be?
And what? He explained in our conversation that some other public jurisdictions have moved to improve financial literacy for young people, but also older people who were unfortunately victimized during the pandemic. They were unprepared for lack of access to banking and financial institutions to make financial decisions. The financial literacy is called out specifically in the final rule as an area for individuals who are so-called unbanked or individuals that don't have access to financial planning, financial institutions, and financial management. So I think the treasurer is looking to bring somebody on who can help advocate and push the message of financial leadership to targeted areas within Norfolk County.
All right. If I may, two more, real quick, we're on ARPA.
Yes.
Two things. We had mentioned that we were gonna line up something with Randall, Congressman Mokley, and a sizable grant we're giving, Tyler Randall, so just wanna check in on how that's doing.
I'll have to check with Mr. Buckley on that. I know he's had some communication because we're trying to collaborate, not just with the congressman, but also the senator's office, and maybe do it all in one.
I'm sorry, I was.
Congressman Lynch.
That was Congressman Lynch, Senator Mokley, forgive me. It was Congressman Lynch and Senator Mokley.
Senator Mokley.
We were looking to.
Senator Markey.
Markey, 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 yeah.
Really.
Mokley, it's a good old name right there.
I definitely need the coffee. That's what I'm looking for. But we're looking to see if we can get a ceremony with them.
Yes.
And Metfield, we gave them seven or eight grants. We were gonna maybe do something with them again, maybe next month or something.
Yeah, Mr. Buckley's working on it.
Okay, he's working on that. Okay. That was all I had.
That's all I had.
All right, thank you. Back to number nine, which was payroll expense warrants for approval.
Mokley, wow. All right. I'm already on Florida. Let's go. Mr. Chairman, I move the following for approval. 23-37 payroll of the county, the amount of $142,647.05, so move.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
Next item, 03-03-02, the expense of the county. There is no number here. I need the number. 420, it's a retype, it's a typographical error.
That's right.
It's gotta be. Sorry, I need that.
Number three, find that number.
Expense of county, expense. The 03, it's just same thing, it's a typo.
Can I see the invoice?
Yes.
That's Phil. Phil, can you come on in, please? There's a 142. Got that.
That's done.
Is there other sheet? You can just read the actual warrant. That's what I'm trying to get. I asked John to get it.
This one right here. Right here, it's just the date is listed. So you got 142.
This is the expense of the county, is this one?
That's it, that's all.
That's, yes.
Okay, that's all. Okay, so I'll move approval for the expense of the county in the amount of $45,544.56, so move.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, thank you.
All right, number three, 23-09A, expense of the school, the amount of $146,306.72, so move.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. And the last one, a bond issue, 23-4, the amount of $135,021.88, so move.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. All right, that concludes that.
Payroll and expense warrants today.
Thank you.
We did opera.
Bit openings.
We're going to number 12, bit opening.
None.
We had none today.
130.
13 contracts award, we had none.
Last week.
Number 14, fiscal year schedule of costs to service court facilities, you'll find in your packet.
Commissioner, come next.
Synopsis of the courthouse facilities for fiscal year 22, Director Cronin.
Thank you. Commissioners, in your packet is the scheduled court costs. Do you want to talk to the.
I'm happy to edit any questions and talk about it briefly.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Sure.
Phil, oh, next one, okay. This is the reimbursement?
Yes.
Breakdown?
Yes, and as you all know, this is a document that we submit to the Commonwealth for reimbursement for our work in the trial court facilities. On the front page, you can see all the individual schedules, personnel costs, employee benefits along down the line. And pretty much everything is consistent with experience, except utilities are up over last year by about $40,000, $50,000. And I can imagine that number is going through the roof next year when we do the FY 23 submission. Because, I mean, as you know, we just added 20% supplemental for that number. And also capital, as you can see, schedule M, middle of the page, $542,712.67. That's last year, we only had $8,500 in capital. So that's a big number.
Why'd it go up so much?
Well, we had the capital plan now.
Okay.
We didn't have the capital plan for FY 21.
Got it.
And so this is where we are now. But I unfortunately lost about the equivalent of a day of work last week due to a family health situation, so I'm really not prepared for a vote on this. I would just ask you to indulge me to check it out, let me.
Take it under advisement.
Longer, and I'll present it again next week. I think these numbers are all good. But, for example, if you go over to the employee benefits portion, if you want to turn the page, it's not numbered. If you turn the page, it's gonna be the front-facing page. The employee benefits, if you come down on the right-hand side, there's a number for the state medical insurance fund and the Medicare and the Division of Employment Security. Those are based on rates that we get from the state. I don't have the current rate, or actually the rate for last year, so I have a call into the Commonwealth to get the proper rate. I just don't want this to go in and then have knocked $4,000 off it. So that's the main thing. I mean, $4,000 in a, you know, 4 point, almost 4.4 million dollar submission isn't a big deal, but I'd rather be as tight as we can. So that's my brief presentation. Edit any questions, if anybody has any questions.
Quick question, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Real quick. So it says cost of service to court is like 4 million something, right?
Yes.
And it says total audited reimbursement. It's blank, is it?
That will be the number that the state gives us when they come in to audit this. I'll send this in next week after you sign it. That'll go right through Commonwealth.
Okay.
And then they will schedule an audit with me, and they send one or two orders out, and I work with them for a couple of weeks, usually in mid to late April.
Yeah, before summertime, we get.
Oh, yeah, right, right. So, and when I'm doing that audit, usually someone steps in to me to do the meeting minutes, so that's why that figure is blank right now.
Any other discussion bearing that we're gonna take this under advisement, hopefully to pass next week?
Yes.
Be signed next week.
Motion to take under advisement, Mr. Chairman, the schedule of cost to service the courthouse facilities for fiscal 22, County of Norfolk.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to take the fiscal year 22 schedule of cost of service court facilities to be discussed and hopefully concluded next week. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Phil.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, I'll see you next week.
Thanks.
Report of the county director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, Attorney Lopez and I had a call with Quincy on the Quincy District Court with our friends from D-CAM. We are currently planning to have a public hearing as required by chapter 34 on April 19th at the Quincy City Council. We have sent out a public hearing notice to that effect, identifying the date. I believe the commissioner's got a courtesy copy of that letter. Otherwise, it went to every member of the advisory board, local state reps, senators, mayor, planning council, and other interested parties. The notice went out, but before the 19th, we have to identify the time of the meeting. D-CAM had advanced the idea that we would have the county portion at 4:00 PM and the state portion, because they have to have their own hearing, at 5:00 PM. So I'm looking for consensus from the commissioners that the time works.
Wednesday?
It is a Wednesday.
That late? That can't be early.
You know, they, we talked about that. I had advanced nine, but D-CAM said in their experience, some of the public hearings, people get upset if they are during business hours and they're restricted from getting there because they work. And by offering them later in the day, you give flexibility for people to attend. This meeting will not be remote access, it's not required to be, so one of the things that they were looking forward to was a late in the afternoon meeting that could accommodate people coming and going from work.
Just a thought, then, just to consider it, just to consider it. Maybe we push our own meeting back and have our meeting at Quincy. Have our own meeting. We're there, I mean, otherwise.
You mean, we meet at one at that chamber and then at four?
No, I was thinking like, maybe we meet at two. It could be any time. I mean, you know.
Well, and schedule, if the council chamber is available.
I believe the town, the city clerk said it was.
Well, the city clerk's word is golden with three and a decoration, so.
That's a thought.
I thought of it too.
Meet there, and then, or we could have an early meeting here and then give us a break and we travel all the way to Quincy, but if you don't think it'd be, might be interesting.
What do you think, Commissioners? Should we have a meeting in Quincy?
Sure, I love Quincy.
Well, everyone loves Quincy, there's no question about it. But what do you think?
I'm fine with that. I think having a remote meeting.
Do you wanna wait to see how next week changes?
We have to double-check with remote. I think Quincy's remote.
It is.
Oh, it is, but it revolves around the Quincy cable.
Just think about it. There's not.
We got a post.
Just think about it.
We can't think about it long.
Yeah.
All right, it'll be done by next week.
I thought we, if we're there again, Mr. Chairman, if we met, the commissioners held their meeting at two, we'd be done by, hopefully, in time to wrap up, and then we go right to that public hearing. Or 1:30 or something like that.
I think the.
It should be a relatively light agenda. That's the week following the advisory board.
That's what I thought, maybe too.
But we'll have to make it one. But I think the the Zoom portion of the Quincy meetings, we probably have to check with Quincy cable because they have a full studio there, make sure they'll Zoom us.
Well, if not.
I think it's a good idea.
I'm fine with having it here, and then we just go.
I think Quincy's a good idea.
Just a thought.
And of course, Commissioner, that's presuming that the remote option access is still enabled by the.
That's right, too.
Which we're still.
That's right.
I bet my shirt it's gonna be, but that, we don't know.
Good point.
Yeah. So briefly, Commissioners, as I mentioned last week, the capital plan for the county for FY 24, which also includes proposed ARPA plans for FY 24, were attached to your packet. You'll be taking a vote on this on March 29th as well. The plan currently shows a couple of different options. Not a couple of different options, a couple of different views of capital spending for FY 24. It tried to accommodate all the requests that came in from the various departments, but at the same time, keeping the spending down close to a half a million dollars, so I could use the balance of that account to offset expenses into our operating budget, and I believe I was successful. Please note on the ARPA side, there are a few projects in there, including the treasurer's planned approach, as well as the Alzheimer's plan that I mentioned earlier. And we're, I submitted a ARPA request to the portal to fund a study of the Dedham Superior and the Dedham District Court projects. It is eligible, and I'm expecting it to be favorably enacted. At that time, we'll hire Habib Architects to perform an estimate of cost and and scope for us to bid the Dedham Superior and Dedham District Court. At that time, when the study's back, we'll validate the numbers that you can see in the blue column on the right-hand side to determine if we can place both or even one of them into our ARPA plans for FY 24. Again, we have a small window of time to use our ARPA money, which I believe was slightly over $4 million. And the FY 24 budget was always sort of eyed as the most opportune time for the county to engage in its expenses while letting the cities and towns go first. So things are shaping up nicely, and I'll have, look for a vote from you on this plan on the 29th.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
If I may, it does relate to this. I think about two meetings ago, I believe, Director Cronin told us about an idea that the Plymouth County Commissioners were advancing about this mobile medicine in light of the fact that Brockton Hospital had a fire, is closed, in our area, Norwood Hospital's closed. As the hospital crisis continues to emerge, as a way of helping our senior population, there was the idea of having like people, I want telemedicine, but mobile medicine. Ironically, ironically, the new Canton Fire Chief, Wendell Robbery, advanced an idea to the Canton Town Manager, Charlie Duty, who we've met, about having an ambulance, which was actually funded by Rep. Galvin in the budget, and to have an idea of where they would go out to the senior populations and do regular checkups with them, wellness checks, working with the Council of Aging. To it, Chairman Conley on the board said, could this be something that maybe Opera and the county commissioners might want to get involved with to help us out in terms of mobile medicine? So thinking about that, again, I don't know if it's a capital program or something you just want to think about, but I'm sure other towns could, you know, use this as well. There's a growing hospital crisis, and we have addressed the need of helping our elderly population. Maybe it's something we can kind of latch on to, and I didn't know if you wanted to have the chief and our chief, former chief duty, come in and talk to us about their plans, maybe in April, sometime convenient, just to kick it around, get some thoughts. And it may not just be, I'm saying, not just for Canton, but other towns. Might be an idea we could, you know, it kind of goes on with what you said, in Plymouth County, they're doing mobile medicine. Just a thought. Okay, so just a thought.
To that point, I've not heard anything further from Treasurer Brian on the concept. Doesn't mean it's not out there, but I will follow up. He was first in the space, so I think we should sort of check the box, make sure which direction they're heading, because
Sure.
according to what I understand, the sunk cost would be considerable, Commissioner. You'd be looking to purchase equipment.
Right, okay.
And so forth, so I think we'd have to do one or the other.
Okay. Well, I'd just be curious as to what even they may want or not want. Like I said, they have the extra vehicle was a line item appropriation that was funded through another Opera that we don't, you know, there's so many Opera things that they found money for, but, and then they're gonna need manpower, and then they work with the Council. It might just be something, maybe we involve RSVP, maybe we, like something to kind of think about, that's all.
I like.
Get some thoughts on that. The other thing was, in light of the fact that we're looking to help out the Alzheimer organization, is it the appropriate time to also open up for Opera? The other, some of those nonprofit groups that we had early on, remember there was a nursery medium, and then there was the.
We talked with them about finding proper partnerships with communities to sponsor Opera applications, and unfortunately, those things have not developed.
Have not developed, okay, okay. But there's still a window of time, if we know, we're getting there.
Yep.
Right. Anything going on with the town of Sharon?
Yes, we have had contact with Fred, and he has, I believe that's gonna be a single application.
A single, okay.
We should be hearing very shortly.
Calls were made to Brookline, we're gonna have some more outreach this week.
Yes, dating with Brookline next week.
A friend is no longer on the board.
Who?
Ms. Hamilton.
Really? No wonder I didn't get a call back. They did not tell me that. Okay.
And one more thing I had was, Foxborough, what are they doing? I have.
Um, there's transition going on. So former town manager Bill Keegan has retired, as you probably know. A new hire has been brought in in January. Bill's still there. I believe they're transitioning together until April. Bill did reach out to our Bill Buckley this week to talk about an ARPA program. I think, as I understand it, Bill Keegan has outlined an ARPA strategy for the new town manager to take and run with. That hasn't happened yet.
Okay.
Meanwhile, Bill Keegan was suggesting that the county look into a similar regional grant program. He wasn't, he didn't give us a lot of information, but it's being vetted right now.
Is that one of the ones that our bill? Is that one of the ones that our Bill Galvin is looking at?
No.
Working with? No.
No.
He's not, he, he did circle with a few though, didn't he? Talked to a few?
Oh, yes, but the, the one Bill Keegan's talking about was.
Something different.
Okay, something different.
Okay, all right. Go further, thank you.
Um, thank you. Moving on, um, we, I successfully applied yesterday for the second round of opioid grants, this CBS, Walgreens, Walmart. Um, I spoke with the Attorney General's Office, they gave me a copy of their PowerPoint presentation. Um, all applications have to be in by April eighteenth, and at that time, we'll figure out if the county qualifies for any funds associated with that grant. Um, speaking of that grant, the existing opioid grant program with the district attorney's office yielded thirteen applicants. Um, I think I mentioned to the commissioners in previous meeting, um, we'd originally planned for twenty. District Attorney Morrissey was inclined. To just run with the thirteen, provide them the thousand-dollar relief, uh, that they asked for, um, and that would be it. So I'll proceed with that. It'll leave us a little bit of cash, about three thousand dollars, which we can use for future use.
Okay.
Um, yeah, quick update on the registry of deeds, insurance claim loss. As the commissioners may know, a couple of years ago, there was a. A fire in the basement that resulted in some loss. Uh, this claim has been very, very difficult to work on. Um, I wholeheartedly agree with Register O'Donnell, um, in his impatience, um, understanding, not his impatience, but the. Um, the complete lack of cooperation, the customer service we've been receiving from our insurance carrier on this loss. Uh, we've amplified our interest with the insurance carrier to, uh, close this claim out. Um, those appeals have been met with some action. Um, we will be signing off on a little over a hundred thousand dollars worth of claim loss this week, and we are waiting for some information from the registry on a microfiche loss. Which is the biggest piece, and as soon as that's in, we have reason to believe they will fast-track that as well. The problem with this claim, i- you know, it's, it's excuses. At the end of the day, they went through multiple claims adjusters. Uh, the handoffs weren't always clean and easy. Um, they put our workers through a lot of loops to continuously provide them information, and it was the definition of frustration, so. I've made it clear to our insurance, uh, agent, Charlie Rourke, who we've worked with for years, how, um, displeased we are with the service that we've received from Cedric on this matter, so. Hopefully, we'll close out this claim soon, but I want to report developments on at least payment for the partial claim. Um, see. We're going through an exercise right now in H R to identify for each department the shift schedule for, um, all personnel, so that we can memorialize in the personnel folders. What shifts each person is supposed to work. Um, there's some disparate application of shifts across the county. Um, we found that in the personnel files, individuals didn't have in their offer letters, what are their times that they're responsible to work? So we're going to be tightening, tightening that up. All the departments have responded back, except one, I'm still waiting for one more. And as soon as that's done, I'll hand it over to Michelle so that she can hand out, uh, notices to employees, um, primarily non-union personnel. What their accepted, um, shift times are going to be, what time they're expected to be at work. Um, and one last item, the weights and measures job posting has been, uh, posted. We've already started receiving some interest. Uh, with some applications, um, that posting will remain up until it is filled, and as commissioners know, that's part of the F Y twenty-four budget request. We're trying to get in front of the market, which we understand will be challenging, so to make sure that we have some eligible candidates to look at for higher effective July one. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Great. Very good.
Any other questions for Director Cronin?
What was the second last item we had for, before we threw measures?
Shift schedules.
Shift daily.
I was going to think about, uh, how are we doing on the personnel bylaw book?
Um, Michelle is, Michelle's been doing a lot of work with the vendor, a lot, weekly calls every Friday. To isolate the latest changes and updates. Um, so I believe she's got another call scheduled this Friday, and they're close, they're down to version, they're up to version ten. On the exchange of products, so it's, it's gone on much longer than we expected. But I think the vendor understands that we're looking for a product that, uh, we can run with pretty quickly, so I have something to report to you very soon.
Bless you.
Good bless you. Mr. Chairman, or Director Cronin, what was appropriate, do we need to schedule an executive session to discuss a couple of those, uh. Rulings on the personnel bylaw book? And would that be held, do we have the meeting as the Personnel Board? Is that the proper way to have the meeting on that? Right, am I right on that?
I mean, I think we have, we have to have final sign-off, right? We're not going to.
Yes.
Tell them to print it until we read it.
Oh, it'll, it'll, if we're speaking about the personnel.
No, I'm sorry, forgive me. I meant, I meant there were two issues raised by two different people on, uh, interpretation of something on the personnel bylaw.
We have that under advisement too.
This, okay.
One at the school and one at.
I didn't know if we needed to schedule executive session.
Not at this time.
To talk about those things. And if so, are we doing it as the Personnel Board, which we are, or as commissioners?
Um, if I understand you correctly, and we're talking about the same thing, one item is currently with Labor Council.
Okay.
And it's being reviewed.
All right.
Um, I don't have a projected date for posting any executive session or Personnel Board action on it. Uh, I'll alert you as soon as I hear from.
Okay, fine.
So we still know the outcome yet.
Okay, good. All right. That's why I get my loose ends tied up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chuck.
You're welcome. Thank you. I think this completes our agenda, except for any other items we didn't anticipate.
Sam, anything, yeah. Oh, do you mind?
We didn't, Sam, you got anything to tell us?
Sitting there patiently.
Think I can let you folks go home after your long day?
Thank you. Medium ice cream, no sir. I'm headed right down there right now.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at three oh five, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made and seconded, adjourned, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Happy Saint Patrick's Day to everyone, and we'll have a full meeting next week.
Yes.
Thank you.